This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and we're calling this special town council meeting to order. It is currently seven PM on Tuesday, October seventh. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Grandowski, who was absent with notification. Moving on in the agenda, we're going to move on to interviews of board and commission applicants. First up is three A Jasmine Birdie is seeking appointment to the Vision Committee. As a regular member, her term would run from March first, two thousand twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. The Vision Committee has one regular member vacancy and two alternate member vacancies. And let it show that Mr. Grandowski did make it. Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are seeking to serve on the Vision Committee? Hit the button to make sure it's green light.
So I have three kids in the Killenly school system. One in KIS, one at KMS, and one at KCS. I've been active in the community for the past couple of years now. And I think it's really important as a parent to be involved in the town and especially raising children here. I think it's, you know, important that I give my perspective as a parent, but also just as somebody of the town. I'm really hoping that I could help shape some new ideas that would help the future of Killenly.
Thank you. So we had a list of questions that went out to everyone who had initially interviewed for the Vision Committee. I have passed them out to the two candidates that are here this evening. I've also left a copy of those questions on the table for everyone. So I'll start out with, what are three things about Killenly that you like about Killenly? And are interested in seeing continue? And what are three things in Killenly you feel need improvement, need to be changed, updated, or ended altogether?
I like the fact that local businesses are being more involved in the community. I like the community events that we have. I think that's really great in engaging everybody of all ages. And I also like how the community has come together in so many different ways. And everyone has worked together and helped each other out. I think that's great. Three things that I feel need improvement or need to be changed or updated. I would like to bring back the Tomato Festival. I think that's something that a lot of people that I've heard have said as well. I think it was great. I used to like to go to that as well with me and my kids. I think that we could do more community outreach events. And like I said, that's, that really helps engage the youth, the elderly, everyone from different diverse backgrounds. And just continue to work with local businesses because they really are a big part of the town.
Thank you. Other council members, any questions?
Chair, this was my question to the other people. In terms of your passion, how would you rate the following things? Like what would be your first three? Conservation, business, arts and music, veterans affair, elderly affairs, and parks and recs? Like what would be your top three?
So I find that very hard because elderly and veterans, I think, are both very, very important and they're just right there with each other. But I would say conservation, business, and then elderly affairs. But like I said, it's really, it's really hard to decide that one.
Thank you.
So how would you be sure that all of the fifty, nearly fifty square miles of Killenly, all of those residents were taken in into account on any decisions? Because as the third district representative, most of the people in my district are very quiet and they like, they're very reserved and they like to be left alone. But their voices are also very important.
I think by surveys that might help, either surveys or being more personal. I think that that's something that, I know we have a lot, a lot of elderly in this community. And I believe that getting on a more personal note with them to be able to establish a better communication, that way we can hear their, their feedback as well. Because some people aren't able to come to meetings because of, you know, whatever personal reasons, transportation issues. Some people aren't very well versed with technology and I know that can be difficult too. So just kind of maybe getting out in the community a little bit more for feedback, whether it be maybe, you know, a meeting we held at the library, you know, to get their feedback. Because late night meetings, that's hard. Public transportation, you know, it'd be great to get them there too.
Thank you.
I guess mine's pretty straightforward. How long, how long have you lived here Jasmine in Killenly?
Since I moved on and off for about four years.
Okay.
But most of the four years.
So I like, I like this one for some reason. This one resonates with me. I get if you were to promote Killenly, like for outsiders to come, spend the day here, what are, what are some of the things that you think are worth promoting and reasons to, you know, to come into town and hang out?
I think local businesses, definitely, you know, whether it's coffee shops, whether, you know, whether it's the great restaurants that we have. I also think that the education system is definitely something I would touch on because the Killenly High School has their robotics program, which is awesome. They have amazing sports department. And not only that, but there also is, you know, Ellis Tech here in town. They have amazing trades. So I definitely touch on, you know, the education portion, all the parks that we have for kids. Owen Bell Park, the library. They do events for kids, you know, all throughout the year. And definitely, you know, the nature aspect, there's so many walking trails and just, it's nice to just get lost in nature for a little bit.
Perfect. I think we do a lot of good things here. I, I think a lot of people don't realize how much there is, how, how, you know, I mean, our rec department, I think, does a wonderful job. We do a lot of things for the elderly. They do the movie nights. I mean, it's, we do a lot of good things here. And I think those are real important things that can help the town, you know, move forward in a way that and kind of takes everybody into account, you know. You know, you're always going to have this balance of, you know, we're, we're a quiet town and we're proud and we want to be quiet, but we're, we're, we're kind of growing and can we just grow in kind of the right way? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I don't think anybody really can wrap their head around this last, the twenty years from now, but what would you see in Killenly's future in five or ten years?
I'm hoping to see a continuing strong education system, unity within the community, more engagement from the community as well, from all different age groups, more activities for children and teens, and to just continue to promote local businesses and, and get more local businesses in the community.
Thank you. Now, in your application, you had noted that you had served on Inland Wetlands in Thompson and that you had attended the Vision Committee meetings. Looking at the date of your application, it was back in the beginning of September. You did attend one more after that, if I remember?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So you, at this point, you've attended four of the Vision Committee meetings?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Mr. Grandowski.
What are your ideas for, for growth in town, you know, like economic development? Should we look at more industry? Should we look at more business? Or should we look at more residential? Is there any prerogative that you have?
I think promoting local businesses rather than big corporate businesses is something I'm a big supporter of. In general, I think that there's an multitude of ways that, you know, we could continue to promote Killenly and also grow economically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no more questions, just want to say thank you for coming and interviewing, looking to serve the community. We always encourage people to come and volunteer. Do you have any questions for the council?
No, but I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll be voting next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda is Morgan Biergard is seeking appointment to the Vision Committee. As a regular member, her term would run from March first, two thousand twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And again, the Vision Committee has one regular member vacancy and two alternate member vacancies. Welcome, Morgan. Just make sure that the green light on the microphone is on still. Okay. All right. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking appointment to the Vision Committee?
Oops, sorry. So yeah, I mean, I love the coffee shops, the shops on Main Street. I love the parks.
Sorry. So again, I'll ask the same question that I asked Jasmine. What are three things you like about Killenly and are interested in seeing continue? And what are three things in Killenly you feel need improvement, need to be changed, updated, or ended altogether?
I like the small town feel. I like the events that go, go on the second Saturdays are really good. I'd like to see more of that, more things for the community to be able to get together. Just to bond and see what the shops offer. As far as, I'm sorry, as far as improvement, probably addressing the homeless population, which is huge, especially around Davis Park.
Thank you. I think Tony was first.
Good evening, morning. So I, I'll, this one's also one that I like, I like to ask. The question is, what is your main objective for being part of the Vision Committee? And what do you see as your primary role as a member, if appointed? I like to just, a little differently, you know, what do you, what do you, what would you say that your strength is to bring to the, to the Vision Committee? Is it that you're an organizer? Is it that you bring people together? Is it ideas? Or is it a combination of all those things?
It's a combination of all three.
Okay.
I'm on the missions and out, uh, community outreach at Westfield Church. I joined another one of the groups for the LGBTQ. So we're just trying to organize and put stuff together, organize to be our guests, help out the homeless throughout the week, so.
So you're in the trenches of it somewhat?
Yep.
Some of it already. Thank you.
Thank you.
So same question that I asked Jasmine. How would you ensure that all of the residents of the town are included in the decisions that are made by the Vision Committee?
A lot of the ideas would be the same as she had, like going out, go door to door, do mailings. Maybe we could create some coffee hour or a meeting place with them, just to get their feedbacks. As she said, do surveys and those out and just try to collect. It's really be more or less going door to door, especially if they don't come out in public a lot, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll ask my question. So, oh, I'm sorry. I'm always cutting off there. So out of these topics, what would you rate your, like, top three passions? Conservation, business, arts and music, veterans affairs, elderly affairs, parks and recreations?
I love the outdoors. I've got certificates in wetland delineation. I did surveying. So number one for me would be conservation, parks and rec, businesses, veterans affair. Because my father's a vet himself, so.
Thank you. Mr. Grandowski.
Yeah, what, what do you see for, what are your thoughts on development for the town? We have, you know, industrial areas, we have business, and we have residential. Do you have any preference for where you would like to see the growth happen?
I'd have to look at zoning and see where the zones are, what they're zoned for. Because you definitely don't want to take public space. That's one of the draws for our, our, our community or the beautiful parks we have, so.
Thank you.
I'll just ask the same question. Where, where would you, where would you like to see Killenly in five or ten years? Twenty's kind, twenties, you gotta really stretch the brain a little bit for that, but five or ten, that's pretty doable.
I would definitely like to see it grow. I, I think there is potential there. There's a lot of land that's not like a park or conservation area that could probably be developed. I'd like to see the mills remain the style that they are, but maybe you can do condos in them. We are in the middle of like New London and Worcester and Hartford and Providence. So everybody comes through. I really think there's potential for growth and to bring in new businesses.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, just want to thank you for coming forward, looking to serve and volunteer for the community. And do you have any questions for the council?
I do not.
Okay. All right. We'll be voting on appointments next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on on the agenda, next item up is item four, citizen statements and petitions. If anyone would like to make any statements, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. We just ask that you keep any comments pertinent to the things on this evening's agenda. And Brian, did we have anything submitted by email?
We did not.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. We have nothing for old business. So we'll move on to item six, new business meeting with the Historic District Commission.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. This is our, most of our group here. This is Becky. She's our vice chair. I'm Terry Barton. I'm the chair. Maggie Weaver and Danielle, don't, I don't know your last name.
Bah, B H.
B H, bah, okay.
Well, welcome. Thanks for coming this evening. And if you can, just give us an update on what's been going on since the last time you came before us.
It was a while ago. Well, our most recent event was dedication of the bench to Mary Kyse. It was in the Killenly Villager. They gave us some nice photos and stuff in there. We had Tammy came to represent the town and town manager was there and Mae Flexer was there. So it was well done. We had a nice
Parks and Rec helped.
Yep, Parks and Rec, they did a fantastic job setting up the tent and the chairs. It was a beautiful day. We couldn't ask probably for a better day that day. So we had the state troubadour came. She gave, she played some songs about women like Mary. And so the other thing we've been working on is the Killenly Grange is in the process of doing some fundraising to make some repair, maintenance, and capital improvements. So because they're a part of the, they're a local historic property, they will be submitting certificate appropriateness applications to get the work done. And generally, when those things go in, we have to put a notice in the, a public notice. And that usually costs money. And right now, we, we just realized this year that we only have like a hundred or fifty dollar, a hundred and fifty dollar budget. So we probably will need to have that expanded next year or whenever, probably three or five thousand. Because those legal notices are kind of expensive. And I mean, whether it's the Grange or any, anybody else, it would cover that. So, let's see.
One of the things that was brought forth at the last, one of the things that was brought forth at the last meeting is that we would like to have the survey, historic surveys from the historic districts digitized so that they're more accessible to other town offices and to the public if they want to do repairs and everything. Right now, they're spread in a variety of places. We have copies of the Killenly Historical Center, except we're only open twice a week. So, so that doesn't, doesn't work. And they've been moved so many places here at Town Hall. I'm not sure where, where they are right now. So that, that's something that's, that's crucial for the next year. So we had a, we had that brought to mind when we had to have a special meeting this summer because someone was working on a house on Academy Street, which is one of the two districts. And we didn't have easy access to the survey one day, so. So we're hoping that that can be something that can be managed for this next year. Did you want to say something, Becky?
I did. So one of the big concerns we have, well, there's two actually, our secretary, it was Ashley Fell. She's no longer going to the meeting. She's not able to make it. She's able to, you know, put together the agenda and translate minutes that we send to her, like on voice memos. But we're, we're lacking kind of support in that fashion. Kevin came to our meeting last month and that was the first time we had a representative from the town council for years giving like the, any kind of liaison report. So we kind of felt an absence of that and we had been asking, you know, even if somebody doesn't want to come to the meetings themselves, possibly could they just type something up? Let us know what's going on so that there's like communication between our commission and the council. And also so that we feel like we could be connected. Our lack of funding and lack of staff support is, is kind of, I, I don't know, it's not great.
Disconcerting.
It is. Because there are things we want to do. The two hundred and fiftieth anniversary is coming up next year. I know that we, if anything, would want to do something, but we don't have funds to do it. We don't necessarily have support. Having Ashley there for the couple of months that we did have her was great. She was very productive, but she had life circumstances that got in the way of her being able to show up. So having someone come in to help support us would be awesome.
And people could rotate even. It was very helpful the month the Jill came.
Yeah, when Jill came.
When Ashley had COVID, I believe. We learned a lot about historic mills and, and what was happening in some of the properties that we might not have heard about. So even if, if different, you know, even if two or three people were to rotate, that would be helpful. And even written reports would be, be helpful. We don't meet during the winter. We, we don't meet November and December. We, we meet in January, right?
And that's another issue we have.
And the last couple of years during the, the winter months, we have had Zoom or whatever the town uses, meetings.
We've had trouble with them. We've had trouble with those Zoom meetings because, I mean, Kathleen was running it. She had, she couldn't do it from home. So I guess someone had to be here and it's helpful for like Maggie and, and me and stuff who have transportation issues and it gets dark early in the winter, so it's hard to drive for them.
I'm eighty, so, so driving in the dark is, is not my favorite thing.
Right, but we do have the technology to
So Zooming works, Zooming works much better in the winter.
Not necessarily the staff support to get us there.
Yeah. Yeah, we usually may, we usually try to do Zoom meetings January, February, and March. Usually by April, the weather is better.
And we change the clocks, which helped.
Yeah.
There's, there are some times when we can't cancel a meeting, you know, like we have to show up because we have a certificate coming out. Usually it's springtime when people want to get working on their properties is when they would come through. So having the ability to have the meetings when it's necessary is helpful.
Thank you. Brian, can we have town staff see what they can do to try and help out with their meetings? That way they have somebody to
Yeah, we can certainly see about connecting them with a Zoom account and providing some technical assistance to get on there if you're all doing it remotely.
Yeah.
Is it that, that's what you meant, right?
Yeah.
And then we have asked around about having a secretary come to the meetings, but no one, no one stepped up yet for that, so.
They're not very exciting.
We'll continue to put that out there.
Most of the time, they're very short.
Very short. And only eight times a year, right?
Yeah, eight times a year.
So it's not a huge commitment, but it is helpful to have someone from the staff and to have the liaison report, even if it's just, you know, over an email to let us all know what's going on.
All right. Maggie, I just do want to say thank you. I know I was at the last Vision Committee meeting and Frank, the chair, was talking about how you would offer to put some information in your article for the Vision Committee to try and help promote our Vision Committee, the article that you write monthly. So I ju, I don't, I do want to say thank you for offering that to the Vision Committee.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grandowski.
You, you were talking about budget and you have a very small budget. And now we're in a brand new budget year. We just started the year. So if you had something you wanted to do before the, our celebration next year, I don't, you said you wouldn't have funding for that. But Brian, how do we, is there any way we can, maybe I guess next year we have to look at that when we're doing the budget so that we can
Yeah, we need to, to, whatever, whatever it was this year is not enough. I think what they did, at least in the past, what they did is when, usually with the legal notices, because they're a few hundred dollars, they were beyond what we had in our budget. They would find it in some other account.
But see, for, for this year, if you're going to do something prior to July first of twenty twenty-six, I don't know where we may have to, a little contingency. It's not a great amount, but we have to think about.
I don't think we've planned anything else but Mary Kyse before July first.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking more like if someone on Academy Street or, or the Grange comes up, we have another certificate appropriateness. Those are the expensive, those are our biggest expense generally because of the legal notices they have to go in. Because there's a, it's a public hearing when, when those things come in.
It's required, so we have no choice but to, you know, to, to put the notice in the in the paper.
You would have that, that would happen prior to the next fiscal year. So we, we are the town manager, somehow we have to allow funds
Yeah, so I mean
to keep you guys going and keep you legal too.
Well, yeah, keep us with the budget. I mean, I think Jill was saying we should probably ask for five thousand. And then, you know, if we, I don't know, town, the town man, the town meetings, they always cut things down. So maybe we ask for five, we at least end with three thousand so that we could actually cover the bills, you know?
So that we can do something for the two hundred and fiftieth.
And, and that too, yeah.
Because technically, when, and then I had gone to like Zoom meetings, WebEx meetings from last Green Valley, they were saying you should start ahead of time, that it should not have just been the date of the signing of the declaration. That, that you should have, you know, you should already have been started. And some towns around here are already starting and they have done things. But we definitely should be doing something. And they said, think outside the box. So I was figuring that because Mary Kies is so significant in national history, that she's outside the box. But she's also within this two hundred and fiftieth, celebrate our, our country timeframe. And we're now the trailblazers. We have lots of other people who, who are in a similar type situat- situation. So, so in fact, I'm working on, on one for Saturday for Putnam, a PowerPoint for Putnam Library on abolition and the Underground Railroad in northeastern Connecticut. And we have a man whose house is still standing here in Danielson. His name was Henry Hammond. And he was one of the, the co-founders of the first abolition society in Connecticut. So we have a lot of people who were paving the way and we should be trying to recognize these events in our, in our past and hope that it will encourage people. You know, when you talk about vision, we want to send people forth. Not to, you know, we want to create a space where people are energized and, and then send them forth to, to, to do good.
Have you brainstormed of anything that you'd like to do for the two hundred and fiftieth?
Excuse me?
Have you brainstormed of something?
We have no budget, so.
So you're.
We haven't, we haven't brainstormed. I, I did think of one thing this afternoon, since we now have the trailblazers. And I keep coming up with a list of, of names. Why not do a trailblazer brochure? And that would not be super, super expensive, but part of it could be used as a walking tour here in downtown Danielson. Because some of the people that we talk about have houses in Danielson or had houses in Danielson. The, the first female dentist in the United States practiced her dentistry in Danielson in eighteen fifty-nine. And she lived across from Davis Park, probably near, like east of where, uh, Westfield Congregational Church is. The house is on the eighteen sixty-nine map, but it's no longer standing. Tiffany lived probably across from where, what do you call the housing complex where the old mill used to be on Maple Street? Across from that. Tiffany's in the, the Tiffany family's in the eighteen ten census in that stretch. So that's another, I mean, Tiffany's a, a big name. One walk we did years ago, and I don't even have him on the, on the trailblazers list, is we have a, a world champion wrestler, Lou Bruyart. And I haven't, I'd have to ask around. I haven't investigated. But I, for this next week's column, I mentioned Frank Dascoli, who was a major league umpire. And I don't know if the house or anything connected with him is still standing. But we've got places here in Danielson that people could do a little walking tour. And I've learned the hard way from Walktober, you can't do good tours on Main Street or Broad Street. It's too noisy. We've tried. I'd better be quiet.
So going back to the budget issue, it's important to me. So we want to digitize the records that we have. There's no money to do that unless one of us physically goes to do that. I don't know how we would get that happening if we have no money in our budget whatsoever.
I mean, right now, all those, all those documents are on paper with the historical society, they're here. So if we can at least, the very least get them scanned into a computer and label them, then we may be able to find some program that can actually help index them so that people can pull it up. They're doing research on, you know, Victorian houses and we could, you know, they could search on that type of stuff. But at the very least, if we get it digitized into a computer, if something happened to the building where these things are stored and it burned down, we'd lose a lot of that data. And, you know, something like that is something maybe we get a, a high school student or community college student could help with scanning it in. Be a community service thing for them, type of thing. It's usually, it's very tedious. I, I used to be a computer programmer and it's very tedious doing that stuff, but it's very important. Because you can't do anything, can't do the next stage until the, although grunt work is done of getting the data in. But yeah, we would need a budget for that.
Are they all full-size prints?
Pardon?
Are they all full-size prints?
Eight and a half by eleven, I believe, right?
This size.
Oh, okay.
As far as I know.
There's just a lot of these books of them.
I don't think there are any that are other than this, this eight and a half by eleven size.
Approximately, how many are, are you looking at?
Oh.
How many, how many?
I don't know how many houses we have in the historic district.
How many binders do we have over there?
Oh, we, we have at least seven or eight binder, but we're not talking about all the binders right, right away, right?
Well, it'd be good to get it all in if we're going, if we're going to do it, do it all in. Because once you, once you get this thing set up, scanning it in as it goes in.
At, at one point back in the eighties, might have been as early as the late seventies, Historic District was given sizable sums of money for grants. And so then it was called the Connecticut Historical Commission. And we had surveys, I think we must have had at least five or six sets of surveys done from the, so that by the nineties, early nineties, all the houses that were significant, that were over a hundred years old, were in these surveys. Now, if a building had been altered a lot, had siding, that might disqualify them. But we have at least seven binders at the Historical Center.
They're probably talking about three hundred to five hundred at least. Probably the whole thing.
Yeah.
I'd have to go take a look on one, on next week.
The historic district binders are not nearly that thick. I mean, because we have Academy Street Historic District, we have the Dayville Historic District, and we have several historic properties. So we have, we have the Grange, which was the old Killingley Center School, and the Samuel Moffett House, which if you knew Glenn Bruno, used to be her home. It's on Pleasant, Pleasant Street.
Well, we're talking about getting all the surveys in because, because the data's there.
The data's there and it should be preserved, right.
And I think we've, the ones that are already in a historic district property, I think we've got those, I think we might have them already digitized or not, somewhere along the line, we've got information on them. But it would just be good to get it all digitized, so if something happened to the building or there was paper, we wouldn't lose that, that data. And if, you know, someone's coming in and wants to do research on their, if they want to do it from home during the winter when there's a snowstorm, they can just look it up. Type of thing. And then, but most importantly, be for planning and zoning and, you know, town manager might need to look things up, you know, some of the towns. So at least it'd be, it's a lot easier to pull it up on the computer. We're in the twenty-first century after all.
If, if you had, I know you haven't brainstormed anything for the two, but what would be something that you would like to do to be like almost representative of Killingley for the two fifty?
As an, as an event, you mean?
Yeah. I know the red, white and blues got stuff that they're planning to do, but what, what do you think that, you know, what do you think you guys could?
You mean, what would our, what would our commission do?
Yeah. You know, my, my first commission that I sat on was, was yours, and I love history. I found.
I don't know. I, I just got past Mary Kies. I haven't.
You know, all of our, all of our efforts were put into it.
Between Mary Kies and, and the abolition that's coming up this weekend. I mean, I'm kind of, I have, I'd have to think about. I think so.
You're attentive.
Do you guys have, do you guys have anything planned for like, I know you've done a Walktober, because you remember you did a walk down Morinav and then around onto North Street. I think the first year I was with you when I had just come.
We don't have anything planned. I don't know if you've done anything with.
I'm past walks, Tammy. I'm eighty. I can do PowerPoint presentations and do events for Walktober.
We'll get, we'll get you one of the school buses and you and Donna Brown will go do a bus tour.
I don't think I could even manage the school bus with my niece. I've done that too.
Yeah, back with the, the Mary Kies thing, I think March is Women's History Month. I know we had a display at the Public Library. It'd be good if we could have a, have her included in a display for March next year, maybe for every, every March. Since she's a central, important figure for us as well as the nation.
Well, I remember in the Tursentennial, there was like every month like Black History Month and there was something that we did that.
Right. And, and February is still Black History Month.
So I, I mean, do you think like if we found you like a case, I mean, there's a, there's a case down in, in Town Hall that maybe we can, maybe you guys can, we can get you the funding and you could, I'm sure people, if you put it out there, be more than happy to donate to help preserve Killingley's history or present Killingley's history. Because I mean, we got over three hundred years.
Right, yeah.
We got some, and I can, if you, and I got to sit on the, the Multi-Generational Committee that the school did that came up with the trailblazer name. And Maggie did an incredible job. Those kids, she had them enraptured. They, they, they just, they, they just, she had them. I mean, it was probably the best history lesson they've probably ever had in their entire lives. And I mean, they, she, you did that for what, weeks? You had meet, we, there were a lot of meetings and you went over everything from before we were incorporated to present day. And, and those kids just.
That's enough, Tammy.
She, Maggie is, is one of Killingley's treasures. You're right up there with Mary Kies, let me tell you, my girl.
Not really. Thank you though. So I'm doing, I'm doing, this Saturday, I'm doing abolition for Putnam. They've already asked me to do a Mary Kies PowerPoint for Women's History Month. So I'm doing Mary Kies in Putnam for Women's History Month. But I certainly could use the same PowerPoint and do it someplace here in Killingley. As long as the technology works. I did a program in Plainfield and had a horrible time with the technology, so technology's a must. I'm not, I'm not like Terry. I'm not swift with technology. I can put a PowerPoint together, but not that.
You have anything you want to?
I know, I'm just enjoying this video.
He's moral support.
So Brian, the question I have, as far as budgeting going forward for the next fiscal year, when would you want to have numbers put together for their budget to incorporate in your budget packet?
Yeah, so we would start the budget process after the first of the year, and we would send out a memo at that time outlining the process. And then you could, you could put in a proposal for the next fiscal year and the council would consider that, you know, through like late winter, early spring to put forward to the voters. And as far as something, you know, in the current fiscal year, if there's something that you identify that you need to get a jump on, you could always put a proposal together for the council to consider doing a transfer out of contingency, you know, depending on what the idea is and the amount of money. And then just touching back on the, the digitization effort. I know the State Historic Preservation Office used to have a, have a digit, I can't say the word, digitization grant. And I don't know, I think Ashley was looking into that, because we had talked about it a few weeks back, and I just don't know off the top of my head if.
Yeah, I would hope that the state would have something that would help us.
Yeah. I know we also get a grant from a different state office for digitizing some of our land records. And I wonder if that's something that could be alternated back and forth between the clerk's office and, and your department to get, to make some progress towards that, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? Mr. Grandowski?
I'm glad you guys were here because we wouldn't have known that you have a budget, that we are not supporting you enough in the budget. So being here helped us out in that regard. We have a commission, but we have to support you too, that, so. Appreciate the work you're doing under those circumstances, but we're going to do more to help you in the financial arena.
If you want to show up to our meetings, we'd be happy to have you.
Let's see, Ashley has me on the email list now, so I will do every effort I have to, to continue attending. I enjoyed it. It was a lot to learn there, and it was an enjoyable meeting, so I will try to make every best effort to get there.
One, one of your regular meetings?
The third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
I think next week's the next one, I think. Well, next week would be the last one till January.
Till January.
Now, now with the three, two fifty of coming up, do you, are, were you still, are you still planning on taking November and December off?
We haven't met in December and, and November for years.
It's usually Thanksgiving and Christmas time, so everybody's always very busy.
Oh, that's true. Third, yeah, that third, yeah.
So I mean, what we do next week is we can start talking about the two fiftieth and then, you know.
If we know we have the ability to do something, we'll be more likely to spend time planning something. But because we historically have never had any budget, other than, you know.
Well, when we did the Tursentennial, we got a budget.
Oh, yeah. Tursentennial was.
That was before.
So, yeah, I think it was before you.
But yeah, they had them, we had something monthly. It'd be cool if, I mean, we got three hundred years. We could fill.
Oh, we, we had.
We could easily fill twelve months worth of.
Oh, we did all sorts of things during the Tursentennial.
Yes, because I did all the publicity for it, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
So, yeah, I mean, I do.
We had a first night or something like that, I think.
Yes, we started, we kicked it off with that first night. And then, yeah, it was something in January, February. We had something every single.
The more ideas, the better, because then, you know, if we know we have the support, we can do whatever.
I, I think you guys should dream big and, you know, put it out there. And I mean, it's celebrating our country, it's celebrating this area.
It's true.
I mean, if it wasn't for the people that settled in this area, this, this town was settled before the country was even a country. So I think we should do it all.
I agree.
So we'll see you next week.
You know, I will, Ashley, I will make sure I put it on there. You still me here at the Town Hall?
Yeah, one oh, one oh two. So you and Kevin could come and help us brainstorm.
It's seven?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, okay.
Also keep in mind that you can change the budget on, when we have the town meeting. So if you think it's too low, you put some masses together, you could change that line item.
Okay.
We all done?
I'm done.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think you've come forward.
Thank you for asking us to come.
Moving on in the agenda. Our next item up is item six B, discussion and setting a date of a special town council meeting for Tuesday, November eighteenth. Brian, this was due to Election Day being the first Tuesday.
That's correct, and the second Tuesday is Veterans Day.
Yep. So we will, yeah, because that wouldn't actually be a regular meeting. It would be a special meeting because it's rescheduled.
Because it's off the regular calendar.
Off the regular calendar, yeah, okay. So next month, we will not have a town council meeting the first two Tuesdays. It will actually be the third Tuesday, which is November eighteenth.
And it'll be a special?
That'll be a special meeting.
So that we won't have a regular at all?
We won't, we won't have a regular at all, due to the fact of Veterans Day.
Okay.
This would more or less be a regular meeting, just with a different name as a special meeting because of the timing.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And then with the special meeting, we can't, then, then with the special meeting, we can't change the agenda, correct?
No, you can't.
Can't amend it, what it is, what it is.
From, yeah, during the meeting, you can't add anything to the agenda.
I'd like to object to that.
Any issues with changing that date?
Do you need a motion to do that?
I don't believe we need a motion. This is just discussion and.
Recommendation.
Yep, letting the town manager know that we're setting that date. That way they can get the agenda out for the right, correct date and time.
Because there's special meetings that have to be posted as a.
It'll still be posted like a regular.
Regular one.
Like, well, be posted like a normal special meeting.
So you post the canceling the first two and then that this is a special?
Yes, yep, yep. Okay, so we're all set with that, and we have nothing for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion was made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Ms. Barclay. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.